Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We have in the room three Select Board members Kurt Hathaway, Matt Geddy, and Mary Ashcroft. On the phone Sharon Russell. Joe Donardo won't be able to be with us this evening. We have several folks in the audience and I don't see anybody popping up on Zoom.
Change the view.
Okay, we've got a few people on Zoom. Very good. Thank you. All right, so please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the like United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have Select Board Minutes for June 4th. And one, two, three, four. All of us were present. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Sharon, your box lit up. Was that an aye?
It was an aye.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna circulate this. Board member announcements. Kurt, do you have any? Matt, do you have any?
I do not. Do you want to do anything in these other minutes? I had a change on our personnel committee.
Oh, okay. Why don't we hold it until we get down to committee reports? Sharon, you got any announcements?
Nope.
Guess not. Okay. Just update from the Select Board Chair. Just to let you know, I had a really very nice time at Rutland High School. Giving scholarships to five graduating seniors. There are Rutland Town voters approved the money and we handed over the scholarship letters at class night last week. So, thank you to the Scholarship Committee Sharon and Matt for working on that. And speaking of that, let's go down to Action Item A, Board to Present Scholarship Award. So Camilo, would you come up? And Matt Geddy's going to do the honors here.
All right, so we have two scholarships remaining to give. And one of those is a $2,500 scholarship going to Camilo Mercy from Longchamp School. Congratulations.
Very welcome. Congratulations. We do also have a scholarship here for MSJ recipient Sarah Gregory. And we distributed scholarships at Rutland High School for Charles Wood, Anna Galoppo, Ben Saretta, William Fuller, and Lila too. Congratulations to all of the recipients. Okay. Are there any questions from the floor or public comments from folks who are not otherwise on this evening's agenda? I'm scanning the vast audience here in front of me and these folks are on the agenda. I think everyone else is. So we will move on. All right. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. He better walk quickly.
I'm gonna take my time. I'm gonna stroll. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Hopefully you're all staying out of the heat. Some of us have and some of us haven't. Couple things, you know, wrapping up the end of the year, baseball was tremendous. I just want to announce that Abby Bennett did our Mighty Mites, which is grades one and two. John Wall and Keith Snyder did our T-ball, which is pre-K and K. Owen Murphy, Jeremy Carroll, Britt Lazlo, Dennis Van Buren, and I'm gonna miss one. I know I'm gonna miss one. Oh, Jason Pugh did our 3-4 and 5-6. And then this summer Lisa Dayton and Abby Bennett are doing our summer softball, which started last night. How was it? Hot?
Close game. No, it actually wasn't bad. One advantage of the summer league is they start later. And that field at Northeast actually had pretty good shade and a breeze.
Awesome.
It was very pleasant evening softball.
Excellent.
Tight game.
I love it. Yes, I hear, I get the updates all the time from Lisa. So a huge thank you to them because without them, we really wouldn't. We wouldn't have anything because it is a volunteer thing. Next to Highway for my mower help, we had a flat tire. And then we fixed it and I flat tired again. And then we fixed it again. And then I was mowing today and 40 minutes into my mower, we got the third flat tire on the same tire. We'll see if it flats tomorrow. I'm due for tires, so I'm going to replace the tires on the mower. Because they do. So that bill won't be cheap, but it'll be out of depreciation. It's fine. But hopefully that is corrected itself. Thanks to Dave and the boys for doing all that. As well as everything that they normally do to help us get us going. I want to thank Bill for getting our cameras reworked and installed, even though he isn't aware that there's thunderstorms coming in and decided to keep on trucking during the thunderstorms.
We were aware. We were dedicated.
They were aware and dedicated. Yeah, yeah. Well, that's him, not me. I mean, Ron White, comedian of mine, has a nice saying, but I'm not gonna say it on camera. Oh yeah, you can't fix stupid. And he's not though, because he got us up running. We now have full view of any car that's coming into the park and full view, though we have to cut down some branches, of the tennis court, pickleball court.
People do still play tennis, eh?
We have, you, you know, that park is just swamped with people. There were people playing pickleball today at 1:00. They, I swear to you. And the tennis, they come like two or three nights a week and there's a crowd of them and they're playing tennis. And your basketball. I mean,
Good.
Not to mention the walker and the disc golf is just, there's easily throughout the day, 10 or 12 groups moving through the park with that. And then tech on dog walkers and walkers and and he'll tell you, the place is just teeming with people, which is what it's intended for. And that's phenomenal. The pickleball signs are in. I just got the phone call a little while ago, so I will have those up in the next couple of days so that people play nice in the sandbox when they're up there. And so we haven't had any issues with the scheduler that we put on. So so far, fingers crossed, that's working okay. I haven't gotten any complaints. And then the pool obviously is busy with the weather. We had, we started lessons this week. And they're in, the kids are doing great with the kids. And so that's really a positive. And then we sold quite a few passes already. I think we're up to, on the pass thing, we're in the hundred.
Really?
Of passes.
Good.
So a lot more non-resident, I mean, excuse me, resident than non-resident.
Okay.
As of right now. And our groups start next week. So if you want to get to the pool between 1:00 and 3:00 next week, you would probably want to come after.
Okay.
Because that's when our big time is for groups.
What, what groups are using it?
We have groups from Northeast, from Rutland Intermediate School, Rutland Town Tapestry, Little Lambs.
Good.
No River. These are groups that have been coming to us for years.
Yeah.
So they're back and they, we increased the price so the revenue will come up significantly than we have in the past. So I did increase the fee per student. So there'll be a jump in revenue. It was time. It was, it was very cheap to begin with. So now it's what everyone considers fair. We did have a pump that was pumping. Our murek acid has been down, which controls the pH in the pool. And that got fixed today. So it got replaced and fixed. So that should, that's a big relief for me. Other than that, it's all painted. It looks really good. If you haven't had a chance to go on down, go down, take a look, go down and take a swim.
Oh.
There's plenty of shade and pretty much don't have anything. Just, this was my first day without having school. So it was nice to switch gears and be there all the time. So.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Questions of Mike Rowe.
Sharon, you got anything?
No, I don't know if you wanted to bring up our policy that we're adhering to and recommending from our meeting on if you go to Rutland Town School, then you play for Rutland Town. If you go to Christ the King, they have the ball games. Then you play for Christ the King. You can't play for Rutland Town.
So the policy that we adopted a while ago, we'll send another meeting and we're continuing with the policy.
Yep.
With, and I did, sorry Sharon, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, so I did reach out to.
I didn't want to say any more than we had to say on that. I just, you know, and I, and I, I do have to say one thing. When I, I spoke to Mary to let her know what was going on and said, you know, that's our policy and the other schools, Mike is gonna check on them. And Mary said, and, and she's right. Well, that is our policy. So no matter what the other schools, that's our policy. So, and I think that's the right answer.
So I did reach out. Rutland City mentions that every time during signups, that policy to their, as far as written, they're the only ones that I've heard back, which doesn't surprise me because it's close to summer. So people are here, there, and everywhere. But I will keep you rested. I think I linked the two of you on to that initial email.
Incidentally, and shockingly, Rutland City was not able to field a softball team. So we have some folks joining our team.
And that's the beauty of it. We try to find place for kids to play regardless, but we just like them to follow what is in place within our local area that we have control over. We will never turn anyone away from playing an activity. That is a guarantee. It just, it might not be exactly where they want, but they will get to, which is the beauty part of the whole thing. So other than that, I don't really have anything. Just come on down to the pool, enjoy it. Open now. Everything's correct on the website. Adult Swim, whatever you want to do. Come on down, cool off and.
What time is adults?
Adult Swim is 12 to 1.
Okay.
There were, I think we had four or five adults in there today.
All right.
So yeah, go on down. You get all the place to yourself. No kiddos, no nothing.
Yeah.
Kind of peaceful and quiet. Kurt, you can even come down too on your lunch break. We got trailer parking in there. Don't be bad. You could come down.
Maybe.
I mean, you know, it doesn't hurt to go in and jump in and cool off for a little while.
Bring the guys down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Take the shower before you come in.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Boots off. You gotta take your boots off.
See the dirt floating away?
Not enough chlorine to fix that.
Okay, thank you, Mike Rowe.
All right, thank you guys. Have a great night. I'm gonna bounce.
You too. Alrighty, Larry Delvanary is not on the call. All right, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
I guess just waiting for the high guy to come back.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, uh, last couple of weeks, we spent four, a little better than four days on a net terrace. We replaced Arnie DeLong's drainage system problem that he had, about 320 feet of 15-inch color. Had that all seeded, mulched, and where that's all. He's happy, which is not an easy thing to do. We went out last Thursday before the weekend and mowed sidewalks, which is kind of like an every other week thing. That's kind of where we ran into the mower tire issue. We got a piece of glass in it. And so the tire went soft. He brought it back. We couldn't get anybody to fix it anyway, so we bought a tube. We fixed it. Pulled the glass out. Apparently the glass broke off inside. We put the tube in it. He went out and mowed on Friday. Tire went flat. He took it to John Deere. They fixed it yesterday. He took it out today. Tire went flat. Took it back down. Like, see if there's glass inside. Oh yeah, a piece of glass inside. Okay, so should be good now anyway. I'm not sure if we got any kind of movement on the F-350. We've had quite a few people look at it in the last week and a half or so.
I have here
Uh oh.
A envelope that says truck bid 618 at 3:45 PM. That would be today. So this was dropped off today.
It was.
Wow.
Shall I open it?
I bet it.
Okay, it's one of the few fun things I get to do.
There was no deadline on this one.
There's no, at this point, there's no nothing.
No, it's just a thing.
It's about, yeah, we've tried a couple of times. So this is for sale by sealed bid. So this was our notice and underneath it says, I, Andrew Patch, bid $9,000 for the 2015 F-350, signed Andrew Patch, 1031 Quarter Line Road Center, Rutland, Vermont. So do I turn this over to the Highway Committee? And let you and Joey chew it over and see whether, what's your recommendation to the full board? Okay, thank you.
Well, that's good.
Good, good, good.
We spent the last couple of days in front of our cold storage building. It was just like sand and stuff. And we tried getting in there a couple of times in the spring and it was, we'd made a muddy mess and got stuck and everything. So we dug a lot of that stuff out last couple of days and put a wrap in there. So we kind of, hopefully we can get in there as, you know, like the the winters aren't hopefully quite as bad. And if we need to get in there, we get in there. More, I covered that. We spent some time today putting the cameras up for Bill around our building, on the Highway Garage. So those are up. Then it's up to Bill to do his magic and make them work. And that brings me to a committee meeting that we had yesterday. Come roll, please.
I guess I do. So pretty much we, the big thing we went over, which we're, I'm gonna guess somewhere. So we, we all had to do the oh, the rankings for the engineering on the
Oh, right.
Sidewalk.
Yeah.
Their shared use path. So we got those results back. I think Stan Tech was above VHB by half a point. So we decided as a committee that we'd probably go with Stan Tech to reach out for an RFP. So we moved forward with that. We figured since Stan Tech was a preferred vendor, it wasn't
Yeah, they've done work for us.
Yeah, and we figured that we wouldn't necessarily need full board approval since we're just going for a RFP anyway. So we're moving forward with that. And I think we just discussed your broke stuff after that.
That's pretty much it. I didn't want to steal Mary's thunder.
Okay, is this when I get to say my thing?
This is your. I'll cover you, Dave. I got you.
Roadside mowing.
Yes.
Okay. The Town of Rutland in past years has tried really hard to get rid of poison parsnip, which is a nuisance and skin irritant and all sorts of other things. I, I know from personal experience because I got a patch in my back acreage and it is in blossom and it's gonna go to seed very soon. So what's your plan for roadside mowing?
As of three weeks ago today, we went out roadside mowing. We mowed for just about four hours and came back and said, there's a wicked vibration in the thing. So we tried to figure out what was going on. And without getting too awful technical, there's a big plate that goes right in the center of it that drives everything, the bearing, the spindle. It's all pressed together. It's just this one big plate to the tune of $2,600. So I ordered one and I'm still waiting. And I called them yesterday and said, where is our plate? And they said, you should see it. We should see it anytime, which is Gohegan, Maine. And I said, when is anytime? And they said, yes. So as soon as that hits, we, it'll take half an hour to put the thing back together. And then we were out on the road.
That'll be top priority once it's back.
My committee personnel suggested weed whacking.
It's the only other option.
I have a hand field mower. It's self-propelled. So if you feel the need to borrow that, let me know.
Mike, Mike has good tires, so.
That's true. That's true.
It was just easier that. You could put the brush dog on the back of that green thing.
Getting over, getting over the bank.
Yeah.
That is not a solution.
So as soon as that hits the Highway Garage, within a half an hour, that machine will be ready to roll. I just gotta get it.
Okay.
The wonders of equipment.
Yeah.
Where did it come from, Dave?
I'm not sure where it type, I'm not sure. It, no, it had to come from the manufacturer. They didn't have one. They had to get it from wherever the manufacturer is. I'm not sure where Tiger is.
Tiger is.
I don't know. So then they had to get it instead of sending it direct to us or having it sent to them so that they can add their piece onto it to send it to us. So.
Yeah.
And just because it hurts my soul, they, we needed, it's called a crush washer. It's a big washer and it's bigger than it needs to be. So you can fold it up and it holds the nut from turning. And it was 98 cents and they sent it to me and it was $10.94 to ship it. I almost cried. I'm like, put it in an envelope, put a stamp on it.
Maybe two stamps.
Yeah, whatever. Still.
We're gonna be watching your budget.
That's what I got.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Highway Committee?
That's all we had. If I didn't miss anything.
No.
I don't know. It looks like
No pain tooth pull of.
Sharon, any questions for Dave?
No, thank you.
Okay.
The Plan Commission, the original Plan Commission is gonna be working on the traffic study for the Hannaford intersection.
Oh, good. Okay.
Premium and Plaza intersection.
Okay.
July?
July.
Good.
Was sooner than I thought it'd be.
Yeah, really.
Oh.
And I think, yes.
Just one thing. The signs are working down at Hannaford. They've moved to Panera now.
Yeah, I heard that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And all these, and all these. I was gonna say, we don't have an extra sign, do we? Stick right there by these.
Speaking of that area, the state has completed its signalization project. So there are now crosswalks at the end of Cold River Road, the sidewalk that we built several years ago, AKA Mary's Sidewalk. And so, and there are handicap ramps so people can easily access that sidewalk or across the street with a signalized intersection. So the state, we're very grateful to the state for making all of that happen and for whatever Dave did behind the scenes. Thank you very much.
Not really much of anything.
Did they finally listen to us after we gripped them a few times?
I think so, but that's nice to see. So use the crosswalks, folks.
And then just, I saw this bullet point E about townwide celebration.
Yes.
We will be there with bells on. I don't, maybe not with bells. Probably shouldn't say.
Okay.
Might get some pushback on the bells.
Cause yes.
Had some really good, interesting things in the past, so we'll.
Yeah, well, if you notice my, my circle article, I asked people to start thinking about truck names and stuff because that was really fun. It was a little.
Rename these trucks every year?
I think so. Why not? Might as well. And we've already got the thing. We can just take them back to awesome graphics and have them either flip them or.
All right. I think we should name Mike's mower.
Speaking of the celebration, if I could jump, did you need me for anything? Cause that's on the list. Cause I'm gonna leave. I just.
Yeah, no, it was just checking in with departments. I think Sharon, before Mike leaves, anything on townwide celebration you want to check with him about?
No, it's long, I mean, he's gonna pick up the meat for me. Am I correct, Mike?
Yep, you're all good. We're all square.
Okay, so that's about it. We pretty much got that in order.
Very good.
Did you, did you say there is no ice cream? Is.
Bowls is not.
So.
Yeah.
Order more or just empty what I have?
Oh, that's the.
Last day.
Yes.
So I can order more just before that if you want me to, like, like ice cream stand. It's like one thing. And, cause I usually stop because I don't need a ton of ice cream and always love it, but.
You don't, we don't need it.
So I, I don't mind doing that if you want to keep that as part of it, but I usually start to slow down so that I don't have an excess, but I can order ice cream to hand out.
There will not be excess coming forward.
Well, that I.
So Sharon, Sharon, will you be in touch with Mike about whether or not to order ice cream?
Yeah, yeah, I will. And then I, but I'll, I'll give you a call ahead of time and see what you think.
Okay. Works.
That was my.
Yeah, cause I, I've got to figure out what we did last. I, I don't know if we can live with ice cream or not, so I think we need to think about it.
Okay. It is.
Yeah, a lot of good stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, I obviously cannot have that kind of selection, but I can offer
Yep.
Something cool that day. If you so want it.
Let me just put in a plug for strawberry shortcake on a stick.
I have them right now.
Those are pretty good.
There's a new ice cream shop downtown. Maybe they need to buy the truck and bring their stuff up. Uh, where's Strange Shaw as well, is there? And it's that's Proudie's.
Yeah.
Proudie's Parlor.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's kinda neat, man.
If there's nothing more for Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Hope you're, hope to see your mower out soon. Thank you, Mike.
Oh, his mower, yeah.
Both, both. All right, Marcia Chaffee, Town Head Lister. And just to let you know, I misread the email from the school folks who wanted to come and visit with the school board. They wanted to come visit with us in July. So that will be our meeting on the 16th. We'll have them in to talk about CLA and reappraisal and can we move it up and all of that sort of thing. So we won't call on you to talk about that tonight, but what's on your mind for the listers, Marcia?
Well, just good evening, everyone. Just wanted to let everyone know that Marie and I have concluded all of our site visits, which were extensive this year, especially with doing commercial properties with Splash Holdings and with the new the new
Oh, yeah.
Starbucks site. I'm, I'm still thinking of it as, as, you know, the, the other site. But anyway, um, those are all completed. Everything has been done. Um, there are just a couple of other things that we're waiting on. And hopefully we will be lodging the grand list next week and getting out the notice of grievance and the change of appraisal notices to all of the site visits that we have made. And listing the dates for grievance hearings.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Marcia, for your work and Marie's work on that. And congratulations on getting on top of it all. So while you're there, we did have in our packet the notice for the open lister position. We did check with Kevin. Yes, it is a position that we do have to fill. So 19th day of June. So we're, so we'll have, so Bill, the position of lister, we, it's I in your packet. Do we need to take any action or have we already done that?
I, we've not done it yet.
Okay.
I'm gonna make sure you are all set with it.
Okay, I have not seen that, Mary.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's Jack.
It's, Bill advises, it's, it's the same notice that we used for previous positions that were open in the lister's office.
Okay.
We do have to fill it. So we, we listened to your advice, but unfortunately the statute says we have to go ahead and fill it.
No, I understand that. Yeah. The listers have to have, you know, three lister positions. And I don't know whether you're planning on having someone, you know, run in the August primary or whether you're gonna, you know, put it out. uh, you know, run in the August, um, primary or, or whether you're gonna, um, you know, put it out.
Did Kevin answer that?
Um, yeah, well, uh, we posed the question to Kevin Brown, our attorney, and the language is in one of the, the notice of vacancy and it says, if a special town meeting is called, the newly elected town officer will remain in office for the balance of the unexpired term. If a special tu- town meeting is not called, the appointee will remain in office until the next annual town meeting. We were wondering if August and November, which are really state elections and not special town meetings, whether they qualified. And I didn't hear anything from Kevin on that. He was gonna take a quick look at that.
Cause it would seem crazy to make an appointment on July thirtieth if there's an election literally within a couple of weeks.
That's right.
Yeah.
Um.
So.
I mean, they don't have to be on the ballot at that point.
I mean, i- i- if someone, I mean, we are, we are sending out both the notice of vacancy and the notice of the citizen's right to petition for a vote. So, um, it is possible that somebody could say, yeah, I wanna run for Lister and I wanna petition for a vote. And call a special town meeting, hopefully for August.
Okay.
We could have just a, a separate ballot printed, so I think we're good to go with these two notices if, um, somebody wants to make a motion.
It's moved.
Motion's made in seconded discussion. Sharon, um, I picked up the two lister things that are in our packet under I. So that's what we're voting on. Any comments?
No, but I have a question on the voting.
Yep. Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, um, well, I didn't know if you wanted to finish the voting and then I could ask you a question.
Well, if it's about what we're about to vote on, go ahead and ask the question now. Oh, okay. Okay, so all in favor of these two notices, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Um, Sharon's aye motion carries for zero. Alright, and your question?
Okay, my question is, on the CLA and the school, um, doesn't the school have to go to the listers first? And then, then come to us? Cause it seems like we're overstepping our, our bounds. Um, I, I would think the school has to go to the listers. The listers can explain what, what's going on and then come to us. It just seems a little bit like we're overstepping our bounds.
Mary, can I, can I just answer Sharon's question? Okay, um, the, the State of Vermont, uh, Vermont Department of Taxes, PBR, they, uh, we go through, um, December thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-four. The letters to the Chairman of the Select Board, Chairman of the Listers, Chairman of the Education of Rutland Town School and the, um, Supervisory Union. That letter is not sent out until early January. There is nothing that we can do to speed up getting a CLA to the school board before this time.
It's not what the question is about. I don't think, Marcia, but I'm not sure what letter you're referring to, but it sounds like a different topic.
I.
I think you just answered the whole question.
I understood that, um, the school board was asking if they could get the CLA prior to budget time.
Now, the, the purpose was to, uh, start a discussion about, well, it's partly educational, I would say, to, to talk to us about how the, uh, CLA affects the tax, the school tax rate formula. And then to start a discussion which uh, would involve the listers about whether it makes sense to proactively pursue a reappraisal to adjust our CLA potentially before we're even ordered to. Now, I don't know, you know, it's still gonna take a while.
I don't know.
From what I understand.
Or not, that was the purpose.
Well, from what I understand, letters have already been sent out because on our listserv for all listers, there are several towns that are already asking about, they have a bunch of new listers and people are saying, well, what do we do? We don't even know what to do. We have not received a letter to reappraise. And as you know, the CLA does not drive a reappraisal. The COD drives a reappraisal based on Act sixty-eight from last year. We have not received that. Um, Maria.
But the CLA. Sorry, go ahead.
What is that?
You can continue, Marcia. Go ahead.
No, no, um, from, um, we have, we know that we have to reappraise, absolutely. Um, we're at, um, you know, CLA is seventy-five point four-three. Our COD is eighteen point four-six. We know we have to reappraise. We have begun the process of sending the paperwork to the state. We have received word from Jill Remick, Director of PVNR, that right now reappraisals are out to twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, so, um, but how do we get, get in line? And can we get in line or do we have to wait for the state to order us to do it?
No, no, we can, we, Marie and I are already preparing the paperwork to send to the state so that we can go out for, uh, proposals to do a reappraisal, unfortunately. Because there are so many other towns that have been ordered to reappraise. We fall in back of that. And as I said, Jill Remick, Director of PVNR, said that right now, because of the limited um, uh, appraisal, uh, agencies that are approved by the State of Vermont, it's twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah. So, uh, Sharon, the in, answer to your question, this was not, this was supposed to be just a conversation with the school board with the listers involved. Just to hear basically what.
Mary, the school board did not go to the listers. They, they went above the listers thinking we could override something, which we can't.
No, they didn't.
No, they didn't, Sharon, they didn't.
Wait a minute, Matt, I was talking, damn it. You know what? I guess, Matt, you should decide whether you wanna be on the school board or the select board.
Alright, that's kind of unnecessary, but Sharon, finish your thought, please.
Necessary for him to butt in when I'm trying to speak.
Alright, why don't you finish what you were going to say, please?
No, I, I'm done. I'm done. If he wants to run the board, Bo Mendezai is the Japanese state.
Um, just to clarify, I received an email from Tina Keshava who asked if the school board could come in and talk to the select board about the CLA and reappraisal. I misread her email. I thought she wanted to come in at this meeting. She didn't. She was asking for a July meeting, which is the sixteenth. And I made sure that, cause thinking it was this meeting, I made sure that Marcia would be available at this meeting. And I'm hoping that Marcia and Marie, if she wishes to be, would also be available, um, on the sixteenth. It wasn't, it was to, to engage in a conversation about what we can do, um, a- about the reappraisal and when it can happen and what the roadblocks are for getting it done quickly. And I, I think Marcia's pretty much outlined them for us here.
Right, and, and, uh, let me tell you, Mary, that, um, you know, Tina, a simple phone call to the lister's office, you know, our, our doors are always open. I'm there from eight-thirty to three-thirty every day. Tina is more than welcome to come in and talk with both Marie and myself regarding CLA, COD, and what we can do. We are proactively working to get the paperwork to the state, even though we have not, uh, received a letter, um, demanding that we reappraise. We know that we're gonna have to. Um, just as a little bit of a background, I have been a lister since two thousand and eleven. The CLA in two thousand and eleven was one hundred percent. From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and nineteen, we were either at a hundred percent, a hundred and one, or a hundred and three percent. In two thousand and twenty, our CLA went down to ninety-nine point seven-five, which is still well within the realms of, of, uh, appraisals. After that, because of COVID, our CLA dropped from uh, ninety-nine point seven-five to ninety-five point four-three to eighty-four point four-four, and this year seventy-five point four-three. Although this does not trigger the reappraisal because the state legislature last year passed a law that said the COD will trigger reappraisals. And right now we're at eighteen point four-four. And as far as I know, we have a meeting with Christie Wright on Thursday to go over and, um, you know, lodge the grand list and all of the work that needs to be done prior to lodging the grand list. Um, we will ask her if she has any insight as to whether or not we will be receiving a letter to reappraise, which doesn't matter because we are already proactively working to get our paperwork to the state and get out there and get our request for proposals to the, um, appraisal firms that have been approved by the state.
Okay. Um, Bill, would you make sure that the, the history there of the CLA that Marcia just wa- is put in the minutes by the year? I think that's pretty striking, cause we were absolutely right on for a bunch of years.
Oh, yeah, we were. We were, Mary. We have never, ever fallen until COVID be- below ninety-nine point seven-five, you know, percent. So it's, our assessment of values in Rutland Town have been spot on. Really.
Yeah.
For many years. So we, even though we didn't have a reappraisal since two thousand and nine, there wasn't a need for reappraisal because our appraisals were at a hundred percent.
Yeah, good information. Thank you, Marcia. I will, um, mail Tina and have her give you a call.
Yes, please do, Mary, cause we would be happy to discuss anything and let her know, you know, what the process is and, um, where we stand with reappraisal. Um, and as far as, um, you know, I know they're governed by the CLA, unfortunately. We are governed by the COD, so two different, two different aspects.
Um, speaking of getting a phone call, was Teresa Mealy also in touch with you?
Oh, yes, yes, yep, Teresa did call me. We had a, um, had a wonderful conversation, uh, probably about a half an hour's worth. And, uh, I think we're on the same playing field. Um, I know, you know, know more of where, um, elected officials stand as opposed to, um, you know, uh, appointed officials, um, so, yeah, we're great. We're fine.
Okay, good, good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, too.
Yep, absolutely. And, uh, she was able to get more, you know, more information because she was, she was totally clueless, too, as to the differentiation between elected officials and um, appointed officials, so, yep, we're good.
Alright, good, thank you.
Yep.
Right, um, any other questions for Marcia Chaffee or the listers?
So hopefully we'll have a grand list launched next week, so please pray.
Thank you very much.
We can get the tax rate set and we can, uh, get out our, our tax bills, which is a little scary this year.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Well, thanks for your good work. We appreciate it.
Not a problem. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Alright, um, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Uh, our new cameras showed up the other day, so tomorrow night we'll get those in service. Uh, they actually gave us a better deal since we bought two, so we saved about twenty-five hundred extra dollars, so the total is about ten, ten thousand instead of, uh, whatever the number was I told you two weeks ago.
Um, we saw that come through on our orders, so, good, thank you.
Perfect. Um, in the, I wanna say Mill Village, but up here, you know, by CV, the Penn Stock's gonna be closed for the next couple of months. So Kurt, if you come up here for a fire, we're gonna have to go somewhere else. Um, they're talking about putting hydronin for us. Uh, I, I gotta talk with them again when near, um, digging, whatever they're dig. But I'll keep you posted, but other than that, that's all I got for you.
Awesome.
Okay, any questions for our fire chief? Alright, thanks, Chief Clark. Appreciate it. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Uh, good evening. I don't have anything to report tonight unless anybody has questions.
Okay, um, we did, thank you for the, um, orders, bills and warrants. Three of us have signed it, so we'll leave it for Sharon and Joey when they have a chance to look them over in your office.
Sounds good.
And anything for Carrie Clark, our Town Clerk and Treasurer? It's really, Sharon?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, we're all set. Thank you, Carrie.
Welcome.
Alright, we got Mike Telehanti on. Alrighty. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
I do not have much. To talk about the, uh.
Well, yeah.
Police committee meeting we had, uh, earlier, just before this meeting.
Yeah. We are, well, let, do, who wants to do it, Matt? Give you the bad news, go ahead.
Uh, well, where to start? I mean, we've talked about hiring in the past. We're talking about hiring some more and now we need to hire more than we thought we needed to hire cause we received, uh, designation, which I'm not sure, we, is it only our committee that's received that?
I think so. Yeah. So earlier this week, uh, our SRO, uh, gave me her two-week notice. She has moved on to greener pastures. Uh, getting a, a different job, a lot more K and, and she's bettering herself, so I have no complaints. She's been awesome.
Yeah.
For the police department after the town, for the school, so, I mean, I don't wish her any ill will whatsoever. She's great. That's once, and now we're down that up position.
Bill, would you do a little letter to Angie thanking her for her service, please? And we'll sign it at the next meeting, yeah. Um, so you'll remember that we were talking about the CFAC position housing the uh, Criminal Investigator for Child Abuse Cases here in our office. The Executive Director has still not been chosen at CFAC. We were kind of stuck because we were trying to negotiate with them to see how much they would cover. So that's a possibility still, but it's not done. Um, Ed informed us that there is a narcotics unit, uh, grant-funded position that would cover salary benefits over time. Again, if we house the officer here in Rutland Town, that officer would be a drug task force officer, but would be available occasionally, but probably not that much, but we would. But we would then be more on top of drug enforcement issues here in Rutland Town, so.
Maybe that officer probably may be used as undercover in other areas, so we'd probably keep it low-profile.
Right.
Vermont and put him in Rutland Town car and print some, but it would definitely be a benefit for Rutland Town. We have a few hotspots and a lot, but we do have some. But we'd have that expertise of the NI, the Narcotics Investigative Unit to come into town and work cases here. They know my opinion is that I would rather they not be in Rutland Town. They bring an element that we do not want here. And with that element comes other issues, thieving, front porch stuff, driving issues, all the things that go along with drug use. So they understand where I'm at with that.
Was there, we didn't get into some of the weeds on this. Was there a reason why that position needed to be? Again, how, like the other positions we talked about, why it needs to be housed in a particular department instead of just
We'd be the sponsoring agency who basically hires a person, but they, the state police or this NI would pay for everything, their whole thing. The problem is other agencies, they don't, they don't want to give up the officer. But I've been approached by officers who'd be willing to come here to, if they were assigned to that unit. That's how it came.
Whatever the sponsoring agency is or department is, then you're still going to be working in a certain prescribed area that would include the town.
Yes, yes. It'd be more, it'd be greater, an area greater than just the town. It would be maybe statewide at times.
What do you need from us to move forward?
I need you to say, yes, let's go forward and see if we have an officer who literally have to have another position in order to hire someone to fill that position. With the understanding that if that position dries up, that job dries up.
I mean, my concern would be filling either two positions first, and I realize they may not be drawing the same pool of people. But, you know, it's more important for us to have somebody who's actually been working on town business than it would be to fill that, have somebody apply just for that position first. I'd rather advertise the other ones, get those taken care of, and then.
So just a little, just a little clarifying, are you going to talk about the policy at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, you do that, then I have a question. I guess.
There's, that's two. So announcement number three is that Officer Plakas and Canine Officer Rooster, I guess that's what you call them, will be going to training, which will take them off our roster from July through October. So we're going to be down some more officers' time there. And with Angie leaving, and that leaves Ed and Ted as full-time JP and Mike Delahanty as part-time. And we're at the point of the new hire that you made the motion on last week. We should probably proceed with that. So on your desk is a conflict of interest policy that was drafted by the Personnel Committee and two members of which happened to also be the Police Committee. And we're, what we propose to do, we're acutely aware that in a small town, often family members, relatives, more than one work in town government. So we have a flat-out prohibition of that in our current policy. It's called the nepotism policy, which has never been a good fit, frankly. So we're proposing that that be eliminated and in its place, a policy put in that will establish a process to avoid conflicts of interest, acknowledging that we sometimes will be hiring family members. And in order to prevent any conflicts of interest, hiring, firing, discipline will come to the Select Board rather than to a family member who might be supervising. So it's, that's, the language is there. The Personnel Committee strongly recommends that the Select Board adopt it and help us to move forward with some of the hiring decisions that have to be made very quickly.
Did Sharon get a copy of this?
I did.
Okay.
Awesome. It looks good to me. Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second? It looks like Sharon seconded discussion. Okay, all in favor of the avoiding conflicts of interest policy, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion is unanimous.
Just a point of clarification on this. This you have in the policy book, I believe this was a standalone policy. Was it baked in?
We do have a conflicts of interest policy in our book on tab five, but that is for the the elected officials, the Select Board.
So the nepotism policy itself was baked into the broader personnel policy, which was tab six. So this would replace that, that's why it's numbered 10, sorry.
Right.
It's referring to that section of the personnel policy. So this replaces that section. Entire policy is under ongoing edit. And so eventually, before too much longer, we'll be proposing revision to the whole thing, but we'll at least have this piece of it done.
So you may want to put the newly adopted number 10, avoiding conflicts of interest, under tab six in your, our personnel policy as it exists. We'll incorporate all of that. We're getting close to the end. The Personnel Committee met again, and we're closer. So there was a bit of a detour, but with that, we will proceed with the, we apparently, when we advertised for the open position, before we knew about some of these other changes, we agreed to hire one new police officer. It's built into our budget. We advertised for the position. One person was not at all suitable. The other person was very suitable. And at your direction, we'll proceed along with that, using the new policy to avoid a conflict of interest. Okay? All right.
So Deputy Chief Washburn will start a background on, I guess, asking if the person's still interested in the job.
Right.
Okay. That was one thing I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Yeah, so.
You want us also, so permission to advertise for another SRO?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to advertise for a new school resource officer. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And Sharon's aye. Motion carries. And then on the other two, the CFAC is kind of on hold, but you, discussion should continue on the drug task force? No commitment until we've got our other two officers hired? Is that the feeling?
I don't know if you have to wait for the other two officers to hire for.
Maybe put some feelers out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. See if anyone's interested in the
All right.
CFAC position, if it opens in a narcotics position, if anyone's interested.
Okay.
What was the status of that? There was another grant you had brought up about, had to do with the sex offender registry?
Oh, that won't be until, I think it's a federal grant, so it won't be for, it won't be for a little bit. We went, we went and talked to them. Officer Plakas and I went to Waterbury, spoke to three people up there. They were very interested in the work that Officer Plakas does. He's going to be tied up with Canine until October, so nothing's probably going to happen until that point in time. And they had never done this before to pay for an officer's position or overtime like that. I understand they can't have him full-time. It's maybe a few days a week, maybe, might be three days in a row, but then it's going to move, move things around. So he's been very good. Actually, he went to another town here two weeks ago just to go get one gentleman who's been on the run or out of bounds for months, over a year. No one has bothered to actually go get the gentleman and make him responsible for what he's done, held accountable. And Officer Plakas said, we're all worked. I said, go, go get it done. So he did. And so when I hear more on it, I certainly hear more on it after Jimmy gets done with the Canine School.
Hi. Any questions or any other information from our police chief?
I was forgetting something, but at this point in time, I do not remember. It's, I don't know.
Okay.
We are busy at the South End again. I'll keep you posted as that happens to move forward. End of the month, stats will come out and we'll talk about them.
Are we finding more encampments around town?
I suspect there will be. I think right now everybody's good until the end of June, and then they have to start their 80 or 90 days that they have to determine, when do I want to go and do I want to be housed during the hot months or towards the cold? So I'm sure they're all working out what they're going to do. I spoke to one gentleman yesterday. A little concerned because this is the worst time for mosquitoes, and he really doesn't want to be out in the woods. I get it.
Yep.
Can't get the job. Wow. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for our police chief? Sharon, do you have?
One other thing I thought of. I got approached by a local, just calling me out, a local, a rehab place, I can't think of the name of it right now, but they asked me to come and speak to them about some of the difficulties we're having with the homeless population. And they're a drug rehab facility, and they want us to talk to the Vermont Digger to tell us, tell them. I guess the point is we're getting a large percentage of the homeless population, but the mental health section of Vermont is not coming to Rutland County. In other counties, Chittenden County, Washington County, but not Rutland County, where they're getting shortchanged on access to the mental health piece, that the wraparound services that they, other counties get. So I had, I was not going to say anything, but I'm like, why not? So if you hear me or see something on the Vermont Digger, it's me.
Well, we said as much to the Deputy Secretary of the Agency that, you know, talk to other parts of your agency and provide the support services needed.
So I was going to hit up Bill, or I think we had the stuff that Mayor Loris, prior Mayor Loris, gave us on the stats.
Yes.
I wanted to get that stuff. And I've reached out to another agency, NGO. She's come to the meeting here a few times to get her take on it, too. I just want to kind of get up, educate myself a little bit before I shoot my mouth off too much.
Don't hold back.
I don't.
Yeah, see if Mr. Loris has updated data, because there should be some now, by now. Yeah.
Okay.
For this, this year.
I think that's all I have now.
Okay. If there's nothing else, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for, I mean, it's been a process. It took some time. Thank you. I appreciate your
You're welcome.
Your diligence.
All right. John Paul Fagnant, Health Officer, Public Safety Building Clerk and Second Constable. Good evening, JP.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, good evening. Just real briefly, we're expecting the siding to be coming in this week, so we should be seeing some dramatic changes on the new building. Went down to Cortina today to look at the rear exit doors, and all of them were propped open. So they're still disrespecting a single thing that they can do to cut down on the drugs going in and out of that facility. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right.
Sounds like we need a task force agent.
Yeah, doesn't it? Kind of, yeah.
I mean, if he knows how to install an alarm bar, Kurt, that's all they have to do. That's all they've ever had to do was install alarm bar exit doors so that the alarm sounds at the door and at the front desk when it's activated. And they'll cut that problem down to nothing. They won't do it.
John Paul, did you ever get in touch with the state about your authorities and so forth?
In terms of?
Terms of the official that was here and left his business card for you?
Oh, yes. I've been meeting the new people that have been assigned our district by the state.
Okay.
Did they have any, anything to say that was different from what you've heard before?
They were emphasizing partnership in terms of approaching the issue, making it very clear that on certain issues, they're going to take the lead, like the hotels or any other property that generates rooms and mail stacks.
So did you explain to them that there's more than one party in a partnership, and if they're going to take the lead, they're more than welcome to do that anytime?
As long as they do it effectively, the problem is, as you know, is for years, they just look the other way on violations down there.
Well, the, the security of the back doors is a condition of our contract, our settlement agreement with the Cortinas. So let me speak to Town Council about next steps there.
Yeah, it's an express term there. You're correct.
Yep. All right. See if we can get something going on that end.
Okay.
Any other questions for JP? If not, have a good rest of your evening. Thank you, JP.
Thank you. You as well. Good night.
Night. All right. Barbara Noyes-Pulling. I know she was on earlier.
Well, she's been bouncing on and off all night.
Well, I think the Regional Planning Commission's meeting tonight, too, so that's probably why.
She's back and forth?
Yeah. And in fact, our rep to the Regional Planning Commission is presently David, oh, yeah, up for renewal. Where is he? David Rosenblum. We have in our packet item number one, which is the, I did receive an email. David is interested in continuing as our rep to the Regional Planning Commission. Have, who have we had as alternate? Anyone?
He was.
He was the alternate?
Yeah.
And who was the primary?
Fred.
Ah, okay. So I think we can move David up to be our regular commissioner, and is anyone interested in being an alternate? Kurt?
Nose goes.
I thought that was a new way of you were indicating.
No, that's the, that's the new way, not me.
Okay. Didn't understand your signal. All right.
Not me.
Well, I'll entertain, if people are agreeable, I'll entertain a motion to appoint David Rosenblum as our regional commissioner to the regional commission, which is where he is tonight because he's not here. He told me that would happen.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, and I think you need to authorize me to sign as Select Board Chair.
So moved.
Okay. Any, do we just leave the alternate commissioner open at this point? Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of David Rosenblum as our regular commissioner, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sharon, you okay with that?
Yep, I said aye.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign it. All right. And oh, the other is the Transportation Advisory Committee appointment.
Oh, yeah.
And Dave has been it?
Have an alternate.
We did not have an alternate. Okay. Um.
Said he wants to continue.
And so David's willing to do it?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Cause he's left the room. All right.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded for, um, Dave Sears, our road commissioner, to be our regular rep to the Transportation Advisory Council. And I think I heard you say, and for me to sign.
I did.
Okay.
You heard that?
I did. Um, discussion? You want to be the alternate, Kurt? No, because you didn't make that gesture for this one.
Yeah. No, I'm all set.
Okay.
So my fingers enough things.
All in favor of David Sears? Please say aye.
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 Aye. And Sharon's aye. So it's unanimous. And I'll sign this one as well. Good. Thank you, folks. And thank you for those expressing willingness to serve. Even though they might not have known it. Um, okay. So Barbara, uh, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Good evening.
Good evening. I do have a few things for tonight, so we'll make this efficient. Uh, in your packet, uh, letter C are updated contracts for our town hall copiers. Uh, the current agreement ends in a few weeks. And this would renew it. And we would like to do that. Um, I did include pricing there. Um, there is a change. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a color copier. I've been making a lot more color copies lately and I have to go and knock on people's doors to use their color copier. So, uh, we're gonna change mine from just black and white to color. Uh, the total is uh, forty-four sixty-one a year. We did account for that in the budgeting planning.
That helps.
So.
At some point down my contract runs out, I think, pretty soon.
We don't have yours.
I know that.
So more than happy to help you with it, but I don't have yours.
I have to give him, I think I have to give him at least a notice or they automatically renew it.
Oh.
So you might have who we had before.
Yeah.
And there is a process to leave that contract. Yes. So we can, do you have a copy of the contract?
I'll, I'll get them tomorrow.
Perfect. And we'll, we'll get into the, we'll get into that.
Maybe the last time I shoved it down my throat.
It's, uh, their, their process is not exactly easy, but, um, when we switched to SimQuest, they assisted in our exit. So we can make the transition over. They were very good with that. So I, I have a guy. I know, I know a guy.
Okay. So the, I'm looking at the pricing information on the last page of what you sent us, but it's not on the last page.
Isn't there? Oh, the original doesn't have it on there. No, not the original copy, but your, your packet copy does have it.
Okay. So any motion on this should include the numbers that are on the last page.
Yes.
Yep. That would be a hint for a motion.
So moved. Second. So I don't even think there, is there a signature line?
There is a signature line, yes.
Well, then if there is one, then I have, uh, my motion includes having Mary's sign.
Okay.
And that was seconded.
So this is, there it is, at a price, annual price not to exceed, uh, do we do both price? No.
No.
Forty-four hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-four cents per year.
That's correct.
Okay. Discussion? If not, all in favor of this new contract for our copiers, please say aye.
Right.
Aye?
Aye.
And Sharon's an aye. It's unanimous, um, in favor. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign.
Thank you. Okay. So that takes care of all the things on the agenda. Um, next in your packet are two letters we received from Carmel Place Homeowners Association. One on June fifth and one on June seventh. One says, we're out. We don't, we don't want to do it. And the other one says, we want to, we want to have an agreement to, um, have you pave and we'll pay you back. This has been a continuing issue that I have had conflicting messages from multiple people and I've asked them to have a single person and that has continued to not occur. So I'm not sure where we would like to go with this. Um, but this is what we have.
So I guess I have a question that may be for the Highway Committee. Cause I think you all were reviewing this with them. What happened? I mean, did they determine that they couldn't, the road was never gonna meet our standards or?
Well, they had no as-built engineered blueprints. So we necessarily know where all the utilities were.
Mm-hmm.
And there was some surveying issues.
There is no, well, there is not. So the survey would have to be done of the road where it is. The surveyor came in to talk with me, who we've worked with before, and he understood what was needed. He went to Carl Ron and that's when I got the email saying, we're out. Like, it's just, they, they feel the requirements are, are too burdensome. And I tried to explain that, you know, we are accepting responsibility from here on out. We need to be sure of what we're taking and, and that's why we have to have this. And there would likely need to be possibly a subdivision to pull the road out of your property and give it to us. Like, there's things that need to happen.
Cause the roadways are all part of that same parcel.
There is, it's a single parcel for the entire property. So they were having trouble coming up with easement documents, as-built plans and it, and, and, and in Dave Dress's email, he referenced that there's, it was, he felt that it was too, too much information as well. So.
Also ends accusing us of not providing a service to a private road. It's a private road.
Private road.
I didn't really appreciate the tone of the letter very much.
Yeah. Right, I, I understand.
We were willing to, to help them out and maybe waive some things, but they got underground utilities and whatnot that we need to know. Is that going down the center line of the road or is it over here on the front lawn?
They don't know.
And they don't know.
That's.
And they can't provide blueprints to say it. So it's kind of where we're at.
And, and we, when we took over Grover Drive, um, we really that, now there weren't utilities underground, but we didn't know the as-bills. And so we did have, um, we took a very close look at that and we did hold them to the standards. So we can't be treating one group of homeowners more harshly than the other. Um, people need to, we have standards for a reason and that's to protect town taxpayers so that we don't take over something and then suddenly have to do enormous amounts of repair at towns taxpayers' expense. So.
Did they say that the developer is not able to provide this information or did they just?
There, there were some transfers of ownership of documents. There were the construction company that built it likely held on to a period of time and then tossed it. But this is, this is, you know, this, this development, I think they said is now sixteen years old. And the construction company probably wouldn't have the as-built plans anymore because they would turn them over and the developer, they said, doesn't have them. So there's just documentation they're having some trouble coming up with, but there's a survey. They were needing to do a survey of the exact positioning of the road through the development and that was a roadblock for them. They didn't, they were blocking at the, the cost and the time. And, and I think they just became, as Mr. Ron said, you know, became kind of overwhelmed and just said, I'm just, I'm not interested anymore. So, but that was immediately then followed up with a letter asking us to include their road for paving and they'll, and with it, with an MOU. And that goes back to previous conversations with they, and they've gone back and forth on what they wanted. And it, there's never been a clear, there's never been a single person with a clear message. It's always been a little cloudy. So.
Um, and the paving schedule is, is out anyway. So the discussion about paving would be for next year's.
Yeah.
And I guess I would. I don't know if this needs a motion or what, but I would refer that specific issue to the Highway Committee for discussion unless you're very disgusted and come to a conclusion.
I don't really know.
They, they have, they, we, we didn't, we didn't get into this. They, we met Monday, but we didn't, we didn't get into this. We had other topics to go over. So.
I mean, it's been talked about before that we might not necessarily want to get involved in, in paving private roads.
Yeah.
You know, and getting worried about reimbursements and all that. I mean, as a homeowners association with the amount of asphalt that they're putting down there, they could piggyback off us and say, oh, hey, so-and-so has the paving bid for the town this year. They're gonna be in the neighborhood. Let's go talk to them.
We've done that. We did that with Mendon one year. We wanted a joint paving bid with Mendon, but Mendon took care of their own contract. We took care of our own contract. So I mean, there are maybe some options and, but I'm not, and I kind of agree with Kurt. I don't, I don't think us fronting it is probably the best scenario to be in. So.
Yeah, it's risky business.
We, we can bring it back to the Highway Committee and discuss it and how we want to follow up, but you know.
Yeah, we can discuss it. We're gonna have to have another meeting.
When do you folks do your paving schedule? What time of year roughly?
Uh, like February.
Yeah.
Game normally comes up with that.
Okay. So maybe what we should do is suggest they contact the Highway Committee in January or February as they're building their paving contract. And even if you don't do anything this way, we can certainly let them know who the town will use.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then they can piggyback and use your suggestion, which I think is a good one. Yeah.
I think Dave does it. They put together a list in February. So if the budget gets approved in March, the bids go out right away. So they can start in the spring. So it's, it's, it's a pretty consistent schedule. So.
And they're gonna be paving up in that David area here.
Plan, yeah.
Depending on the MS four.
Might work out. Well, if they want to do it next year. I, I.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll let the, we'll, we'll bring it back to the Highway Committee. We'll hash it out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, the, the next items are three invitations to bid. Uh, one for diesel fuel, one for heating oil, and one for propane. Um, I included the specific properties because it's different for each one. Um, the diesel fuel, I did a slightly different date range. The heating oil and propane I did for the, did for the heating season as we've done in the past, but diesel fuel, because we use them for the backup generators, I did for a calendar, I did for a twelve-month period. Because if we have storms, we need diesel, we want somebody to be able to call. That was my thinking. Uh, I did also note on the heating oil one, uh, I'm sorry, for the propane one, because the new public safety building will be propane now, not heating oil. That, um, that building would be, um, start at a date to be determined. I think it'd propane for that one.
Okay. Now, we were remembering that we hadn't really gone ask for bids before because we just basically renewed with our preferred vendor, but because there's interest by another vendor, we thought it'd be fairest to go and request bids. So do these. And Kurt had some points about rack price.
Yeah. And it looks like they're, I mean, we can accept bids be both ways, a variable or fixed rate. And then we can choose.
Cause the fixed rate would be that pricing on the day, right?
Uh, I think a variable would be the rack.
I'm trying, yes, the variable rate.
A fixed rate would be so much a gallon.
Right, for, yeah.
And then your variable would be your rack price plus essentially their car or delivery fee. So we, we can pull it both ways and some people might put in bids for both. Who knows?
Yeah. Uh, when's the time and date specified? When's the date?
I, I had them.
Okay. Friday, July twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Uh, to be open Tuesday, July thirtieth. Okay. What's your pleasure?
We'll throw them out there.
All right. Um, so I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded to invite bids for diesel fuel, heating oil and propane at various town facilities. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sharon, you okay with this?
Yep, I said aye.
Thank you. Okay. Motion carries four zero. And we're all set. Thanks for pulling that together, Bill.
Absolutely. Uh, the next items, uh, and there are originals, uh, for these, Mary, in the, in the green folder are the copies of the paid holiday policy and comp, uh, comp time policy that were adopted and those are the copies for signatures.
Okay. I'm circulating those now. He voted on them last meeting.
And we will have them hang out here for Sharon and Joe when they are able to come in to sign those for us.
Okay.
Okay. And there are the.
That should go on our policy book.
Yes, it will. Yeah. We, and once I get the signed copies, I'll make
Okay.
photocopies for everybody and distribute them appropriately. Uh, the last item in the packet is, uh, a summary of some changes to open meeting law taking effect in a couple of weeks. Um, there's a few things that are on here that, um, I have already taken care of and put on such as, uh, there is a requirement to post on our website an explanation of the process for submitting notice of an open meeting law violation to the public or the Attorney General and a copy of the VSA statute that goes along with it. So that was along, so that is on there now. Uh, but there, uh, it does, this is updated. Um, there, it's been a while since it actually substantially updated. So they took the, uh, took the opportunity. So there are some requirements for, uh, select board chairs to have an annual, uh, training on open meeting law. Congratulations.
Need to go to one.
Yep.
Or, or to conduct one.
For you to participate in annual training.
Okay.
Um, yep. Uh, and that's beginning in January first.
Do I get CLE requirements for this post? I bet I do.
Open media law, I don't know.
I bet I do. Maybe. Okay.
Uh, so we've, we, we have met our requirement for posting on there. Um, there, it's, it's not complicated, but a lot of things we're actually already doing. So some of the, like recording meetings and online, online access and things, we're, we're, we're doing that now. So we're, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, there's really not much to do, but just some, those are changes that go into effect for every body, event, body coming up soon. Uh, on.
I'm assuming that VLCT will have the training sessions and you'll let me know.
Regional, uh, Regional Planning Commission has a, like a training class, like, like, um, open meeting law training. I think that's more geared toward newer elected officials. But that's June twenty-sixth, the evening of June twenty-sixth. Uh, VLCT will, um, almost certainly have the training.
Yeah. The training requirements take effect January one of twenty twenty-five. So I got a little time.
We got a little time.
So they're, they're requiring electronic access to meetings.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to figure that out for town meeting.
Yep.
At the school. Cause we haven't been doing, been doing that.
We did it. We were able to do it once and that didn't work. It, it worked all right.
And we'll have to remember it for other stuff. Like when we had that site visit down at
There, there are some exemptions in here. So, yeah. Yeah. If, there's, there's an exemption if compliance would impose an undue hardship. So a site, like a site visitor road would, would, would be, that would be.
We would just have to remind everybody, you can't, anything, you know, anything that needs to be on the record, you have to go back into the meeting. So, okay.
Uh, on your desks are a couple of items left. Uh, did update the capital improvement slash Cortina settlement spreadsheet. I went back and updated the amounts there. Um, we still don't have a balance for it yet, but we've got, I added in the public safety building vote from March of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and everything else is current at this point. So we have a couple, uh, a couple of items that I don't, I, the amounts, the amounts specified, like the McKinley Avenue well, we just go back and find. like the McKinley Avenue well, we just go back and find out how much they actually spent on it. And the deficit vote from just a couple of meetings ago is there. So we, those things, actual numbers put in there, but, um, yeah.
Your, your column on the right at the top says first discussion.
Yep.
On the origins. So are these not actually decisions? Are they just discussions?
That's, that's a link to when they first started talking about it. So in, in the actual spreadsheet, tho- those are, so there's link, these are all linked documents. So, um, I can, I can get anybody, any copies of these documents easily. Um.
Okay, so I guess my question though is then these numbers that are in the approved column.
Yes.
Have you actually verified approval for all of these?
Yes, I went through, so this took me between eight and ten hours to, to do this whole thing, to go by. I had to go through, and I had to have to go through meeting by meeting to find some of these, but these are actual amounts. Uh, and, um, the actual amounts, meeting dates and a link to the minutes for each one that's approved. So I gotta add the one from, uh, June fourth in there. Um, but, uh, but yeah, that's all, that's all there. So those are, those are actual approved amounts from those meetings for those specific items.
Um, where is, and I, I meant to ask it too. Where is the hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars from the federal government for the public safety building? Remember that?
Yep. Uh, it's in there because Ted checked with Kerry last week and they found the numbers all plugged there. I forgot where it was on.
So we have received it.
Yes.
Good.
It's a separate grant fund, right?
Yes.
It is a separate grant fund. Yeah.
It was for the, uh.
We're in generations.
Emergency Management Center.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. I don't know where to put that, but that, anyway.
That wouldn't be here. Cause that's, but yeah, that's, I, I don't, I don't have any of that grant paperwork. I don't, I don't, I don't.
Kerry, it's listed under something different.
Okay.
The numbers lined up.
So.
She found that.
Good.
What's, I mean, figured up from the bottom, McKinley Avenue Fire Station well, actual cost TBD.
Yep. So the, the fire station got a new well back in twenty eighteen. And the vote was for the cost of whatever it's gonna cost to do it. There wasn't a specified amount because it wasn't, because with, with, when they drilled the well, there was, they couldn't say it's gonna be exactly this price because it's per foot. So they, uh, the vote was for the amount of the cost of the project. So that's, that's another reason I added the column for actual amount spent. So oh, that can be lined up and be like, okay, so for twenty sixteen, the Dewey Field project, we actually spent thirty thousand. We know we spent twenty-nine-eight, you know, so we can go in there and, and, and that can be put in there. But the, the, that's an amount that was not specified, uh, because it wasn't known.
Okay. So it just needs to be like that.
Yeah. But again, some of these things, the, if, if some, like Mike's mountain bike trails from July nineteen, twenty twenty-two, not, it was not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. So I, I don't know what he actually spent on it though. So the, the, those, those were the, that, those were the amounts that were, that were specified in that, in that discussion or on, on that vote.
Okay.
Still working brokers.
Yeah, but this is really good.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah.
A lot of meeting minutes to go through, but, but I, I, I actually am going through every one of them for about three years because I, I, I wasn't finding what I thought was there. So it was just, it took a little time, but we, we, we found it all. So, and again, like my, like Dave's highway trucks were not to exceed a hundred twenty thousand. I don't think we spent that much on them. So there's just, we gotta go back and finally, yeah, we gotta, that's, that's just gotta get reconciled. So, yeah. But we can add to this and it's, it's a, it's a shared document. So, um, uh, it can be updated as we, as we go along and keep it going.
Okay, good.
Uh, did you get a chance to go through the something thousand pages for the national opioid settlement?
Surprisingly, no.
Okay. Uh.
I, you know, we, I think we get one thousand eighty bucks, eight, one thousand.
It's not a lot. We get, we get about fourteen hundred, I think.
Oh, okay. So it's a little higher. Um.
No, I'm sorry. There's two, there's two amounts. There's, there's a thousand eighty-two and a thousand sixty-eight.
Two thousand bucks. And, and our question, my question that I was gonna try and answer is how limited are we to using this money and is it worth it? Or do we just do something like, I don't know. We can designate another agency. We can turn around and say Rutland City, you're getting a big chunk. Would you like ours? Because we can't ramp up a whole program around this. Um, just a thought. And, but I don't know what we can use it for and no, I didn't research it.
Yeah.
And when do we have to?
Uh, it's in July. No, it's, it's not far from now. Uh, but we have to set up a, basically like, we'd register an account with them, register, with register with them to be able to receive it. So that's what we would, we would need to do that if we want to, uh, go forward.
Would you send me an email and remind me to look at this?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh.
Is the league of cities and towns being helpful? I mean.
I haven't seen, this, this didn't come through them at all.
Still, once in a while.
I, yeah, I can look up and see. Sure.
Their toe outside the little tent and give advice on federal stuff.
Every now and then. Well, I'll, I'll take a look and I'll see what I can, what I can find on that. Uh, all right. So cap improvement, Cortina work. Uh, a- as Mike said, so the, the electrical upgrade work in the building is complete. Uh, we had a couple of little hiccups, but nothing, nothing catastrophic. We were closed, we were, we were closed for two days. Uh, so I took that opportunity to go up to Northwood and help Mike, well, help Mike. I, I put in the cameras for Mike. Um, the, well, I was looking at contractors to do it and they were around a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars an hour to do it. So I spent about twenty hours of my two days that were not here and went up to the north of the park and, and worked on that Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday um, to get it done. But it's done and they look great. Um, so that's, I got, so some work to do on Dave's. Uh, and then that's all from the, uh, uh, VLCT grant. That's the things we purchased uh, through that grant opportunity. So we're trying to get it done so we can apply for the reimbursement. Uh, so that was, uh, and then to come, I had to come here on Sunday to help because the power set off alarms and we had to go reset alarm. So, sorry. We got it done. Uh, as Kurt said, uh, the planning commission followed up. They're gonna, they're gonna take care of that traffic study for us. And they said those, they're gonna take care of it and, and they understand the intent behind it and what we wanna, what we're looking for. So they're, they're on board and they're gonna help get with that. Uh, the Simon's Avenue intersection, we were, I did get ahold of V-Trans and we've got a meeting planned with them as well to talk about the intersection, uh, the west intersection of Simon's Ave. We got a preliminary discussion there.
I use that quite frequently.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna slow you down.
Mm-hmm. Uh, you mentioned Route seven colder road intersection, which looks great. Uh, I have a, I, I, uh, been invited to the, uh, site review in a few weeks where the, everybody comes down and they say, okay, we're, we'll look at it. So if you, if you're driving through, if you see any issues, any concerns, let me know and I can bring it to the, to the meeting when we go down there. But yeah, that's, the sidewalks look great. All four, all four sides.
Let's do a letter. They never get letters thanking them for stuff.
Sure.
Let's do a letter thanking them for.
I might go, I might go to their head.
Yeah.
Just this once.
Um, and I'll remember, but we were, we had, we had, the title for Ted's truck was a little elusive. And Ted's been about two years trying to get the title and we could never get the title. And I finally, I spent about two weeks on the phone on and off with talking and, and being, being a little too sweet to people sometimes, but we have the title for the truck. It is ours free and clear. It's registered to the town. It's all ours and, and ally, ally is, is out of the deal. So that was, that was, I couldn't believe I showed up my email. Um.
Also, uh, my cruiser, the Chargers in the town safety.
Yep.
Okay, good.
We have been, we've, we've been getting a lot of little things wrapped up and Ted and I have been working back and forth and we've got, we've got a loss. We found a registration for a vehicle we sold that we're still paying for. So we're gonna get rid of that. So we're, we're, we're making progress. We're making progress. Uh, and the last thing you, you had talked about was Kevin's list. I still have Kevin's.
Yes.
List, which has grown to seven items now that we're waiting for feedback on. So.
I'm gonna call them too.
Some, some of them are getting to be a little.
Why don't you send me the list and I'll call them.
Sure.
Um, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Hey, um, committee meetings, we've gone over rack personnel committee. Matt, you had a change in the.
Well, I mean, in light of what we discussed earlier, I think we just need to make a change, Bill, that, that policy was, you know, a recommendation recommended to the board. So.
You talked about the policy, but you didn't actually talk about bringing to the board. You sent me the email afterwards, but that's, I, I'm like, okay. So I, I completely agree.
Sorry.
But that's what it was in there. So I completely agree.
That was the type of recommendation. Maybe we didn't say those words. I don't know.
I didn't just copy and paste these. I do actually listen to the meeting. So, but you know, that folder, the folder that's here was there, is actually gone. I don't know what you meant by that folder being there was. It's gone. I was just.
Funny how that works.
Weird. Yep. And I'll be at townwide celebration. I've been burning tonight before. I'll be, I'll be at townwide celebration.
Very good.
I'd be a little late, but I'll be there.
Good. Um, so action needed. We did the scholarship awards too. Um, long trail. So we should just mail out.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was gonna, yeah. Yeah, it gets put right in the green folder and I'll, I'll take care of that. Yep. No problem.
We did the regional commission and transportation council. Uh, we did the SimQuest copier contract. The school board is July sixteenth. Um, townwide celebration, I think most people that we checked with are in. Any other new items? Anybody have anything new? Nope. Um, and we have no need to go into executive session.
Sweet.
All right. So anything else from anybody? Sharon? You all set?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye.